And here, I brought copies of this.
Listen, uh, thank you for today, thank you for each person here and thank you for the opportunity to discuss business of our county. Pray that you just, you give us wisdom and all that we say to do, I pray that you be pleased in your sight. Pray that you can bless our community and our county. Pray send you a name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, the meeting was over again and then I'm here motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion to have second. Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the January couple hearing and the meeting minutes. Those who want to go, those who want to go approve those.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to have second.
Second.
Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is open business. We do not have anything that I'm aware of, but we'll move on with item seven, the support of the assessment appointment. Mr. Willie Wingon, or William Wingon the third, has served for a long time under the assessment board, um, has asked, or assessment board has asked us to reappoint him. And so I hear a motion to reappoint Mr. William Wingon the third to the assessment board.
Second.
Motion to have second. Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is to approve the at-large members of the industrial authority. The two at-large members that have been recommended by the authority is Robin Miller and Kenny Letherton. So I hear a motion to approve those.
Motion made.
Have a motion to have second. Second. Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is to approve mountain control contractor system on the agenda, um, having discussed with ACCT. And we want to discuss this with the city during our service delivery strategy, so we move on back second. Next thing on the agenda is the twenty twenty-four CBG conflict dimension discussion. That is, just to give you a brief description of what that is. We are looking at doing CBG project on Meadowville Lane, which is behind, um, Dollar General, Allen's Place right there. Um, so if anyone on board or related to that project has any ties to that project or property that is affected by that project, they would need to, uh, submit a full disclosure. If there's anyone on this board having a conflict with that problem. I mean, if not, I was aware of, so, alright. Next thing on the agenda is the kitchen office bid approval for the roof. We had three bids. You have prime roofing at thirty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Top foot roofing submitted three bid versions to the lowest bid being thirty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars. And prograph exterior submitted a bid of twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. All bids were compared. I hear a motion to approve a little bit of the prograph exterior for twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars to redo the roof on the extension office.
Motion made to approve.
Have a motion to have second. Second. Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is approval of Hickory Road and Houston Circle. Hickory Road is the one that goes out toward River Bend, and the Houston Circle is only the portion that comes from Highway Home down to where it turns off at the elementary school. That portion of that road actually belongs to the county and is in pretty rough shape once you get past the dumpsters. Um, we bid this job out previously and with the amount of funding that we had that we could use, we could only do about half of Hickory Road if we use normal payment methods of issue, so, um, we can use triple surface treatment, which is the same trip, uh, the same type payment that's currently on that, that road. And we chose to do that and redid the project. Now we're capable of redoing the entire road on Hickory Road as well as doing the job on Houston Circle.
This one's here, but you know how many miles that is?
Uh, somewhere around six miles, I remember, I don't know well, something like that. You got four bidders, Rick Brothers was bid a million fifty-three thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Griffin Grading Concrete at eight hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. East Coast Asphalt at eight hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred minus six dollars and forty-five cents. And the Strokes Company at seven hundred eighty-two thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-one cents. So I'm here, motion to approve the Strokes Company's territory.
Second motion to approve, uh, a little bit of the Strokes Company.
Uh, a motion to have second. Second. Have a second any discussion? You know, please say aye. Any put a black sign? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is public comment, so we'll ask you to come up to the microphone, bring, make sure the place. Uh, if you need to add a public comment, you come up now and say.
My name is Dan here, I've got the microphone before, everybody. Can you hear me?
Right.
I was told the department to be on the citizens committee to come up with recommendations of consideration by the zoning board of solar matters. Near the end of one meeting, when the committee moved into park by the zoning board building, I asked Chairman Parker a question that neither this county would answer. This is a question that Park Chairman Parker had repeatedly ignored and refused to answer. I don't think Mr. Luke Roberts is here today. Is Mr. Luke Roberts in the room? Luke Roberts here? Well, he says he's here on the minutes. So next month, I'd like to, uh, it be noted that Mr. Luke Roberts is absent today before y'all let us approve the minutes for next month. That question? The question I'd like, uh, the public to know, is that question, why do the commissioners always vote unanimously without any discussion before they vote? That's the question I asked Scott as, uh, we left one, after, after one of the meetings. And Scott said, quote, "He can answer while they always vote unanimously." He said before, every commission meeting, he called each commissioner and discusses what's on the agenda and finds out how they're going to vote. And that's why we always vote unanimously. I was stunned. So I looked it up in the official code of Georgia. And the bar one Scott's famous saying in this commission meeting, quote, "That is absolutely illegal." He's right. But guess what? You're right, it's being illegal. But the good sense of the urban can with sound election day, what's right, what's ethical. They would say after four more years, the commission meeting behind closed doors, four more years discussing the system's business behind closed doors, and four more years of voting behind, but, closed doors. Since Mr. Luke Roberts is not here tonight, I can't give him the exact words that I just spoke in here, but my assistant somewhere is going to give out the, uh, exact words I just spoke. So maybe when Luke Roberts writes up no sort of star, he'll report exactly what I just said. Thank you.
Anyone?
I have a question of the, of the Republican Party, this is in the paper this week on the development plan about the purchase of a motor grader from the backhoe and the truck. Uh, for the county, which moved to the present address as a flat picture and we thought that we may, uh, I was, it was under the impression that we had all these funky motor graders, so can you enlighten us as to why we need to develop them?
We currently have two motor graders that are on lease. That was a decision that was made before I took office. Those two motor graders go back to the company in October of this year, so that will prove us short. It takes close to a year to get a motor grader in at this point. So that's the reason we made a decision early to go ahead and order them, so we have a replacement for those two. Now we're not replacing both of them because we've already bought one, but we'll replace them with the others.
One more question, yes, I, I look at the grant, is this going to be a grant, will it be a funds matching grant, will it be a one hundred percent grant, or is it going to be a low interest loan to the county?
It depends on what they award us. It's us asking for grant funds. We don't really know what they'll award us and what they will not at this point. We applied and something that was not done, that was not done frequently before I came in. Again, large equipment projects that we made now, we applied to those grant funds before we made that purchase, as soon as we can do.
Okay, well, appreciate you asking.
I'm Janet McManahan, and as a representative of the people in Mystic that have asked me to help them with the water situation, I've sent all four samples of water, all four samples, came back with arsenic in the water. It was less than the EVA allowable maximum of drink parts per gallon. There were between two and three parts per gallon on every sample. I don't know whether the other people in Mystic know that they're drinking arsenic water, and that's real important to know even if it's a small amount, because arsenic stops the seventeen genes that stop cancer. So it's real important that those people in Mystic know that they are drinking arsenic. Also, two of the samples, one had high iron in it. When, um, we found, after Ben was diagnosed with cancer, we found high arsenic, magnesium, and iron in our water. And that, we were told that that was a combo that caused very quick fast growing cancers. And one of the samples had high arsenic and high, not high arsenic, arsenic and high iron in the sample. The, uh, one of the samples had eleven times the maximum EVA allowable amount of lead in the water. And, um, that needs to be addressed. And I just wondered, and I said that to Mandy Musgrove, hoping that she would turn it over to you.
She showed it to me today. My question of that is, uh, how do we have an anomaly to where only one, where were the samples actually taken from?
Okay, what, from the spigot? All four of these were taken from the spigot in the sink. And where, what you have to do, what my understanding is, is, um, we had a similar situation in Willacoochee, where almost every person on that street had cancer. And the street, the water lines were not being flushed on that street. It was cul-de-sac. And so all the heavy metals were collected on that street. And in almost every, um, water sample, there was too much arsenic in the water. So, um, we really did, also we found uranium in several of the, um, water samples on that street in Willacoochee. And the, uh, Georgia lab, the lab at UGA worked with Lace Butch, who was the mayor at the time, to remedy, make sure that those lines were flushed and to tell all the people on that, um, property that they really, the ones that we couldn't get in touch with, I think we tested eight homes. Uh, there were three other homes on that street to get their water tested. And everybody had to flush their water heaters, um, and they retested the water. Anyway, this lady was in the hospital, I think she just recently got out, that had too much lead in her water. And I have another sample that has not been sent in yet that's on that street. But what happens is, uh, sometimes, like years ago, and they're not supposed to be doing it anymore. Years ago, the pipe fittings were put together with lead. And when the water sits in those pipes, lead gets in the water, especially when there's fluoride, and there's natural fluoride in this area, um, fluoride pulls the metal into the water. It binds to it and pulls it into the water. So, um, that could be what the problem is. She could have lead somewhere from where she was attached to the line, the city line at the street, between there and her home. Um, it could be her pictures, but that needs to be addressed.
That would be my concern, since it was one out of, how many samples did you, how many houses?
Before last week.
So we had one that had extremely high levels and the others did not.
Yeah.
So, uh, is, was that the only one?
Only one on that street.
That street? What street was that?
It's much of a street.
Brandon, you familiar with? Brandon himself and then several other departmental officers have been out pushing the departmental before, so that's why I'm asking him, so he can make sure that the line on that street was flushed as far as I know, all the flushes were.
This, uh, this is the one that has the church at the end of the street? That one? Um, and where, I, I know you're still working with the meters. Do you know when the other problems are going to be?
As soon as we can. Uh, Chad was just, uh, to be honest, an engineer on the project. I sent him a message earlier today to see if he had an update. And I talked to him last week. He said he expected the meters to start running in place within the next few weeks. But he'd have to talk, call them, get a definite answer. Um, but once we get that done, we'll progress to the next step.
Okay, do we have to wait on the meters to clean out the insides of those tanks?
If he's flushed the, the lines, I mean, I don't know how much more you can actually do to, to clean out the actual pipes or anything.
You actually are supposed to clean the water tanks?
The tanks that's out there will be a big deal first by the time this is done, and that's part of the project, yes.
And, uh, I understand that compressor, the little air pump thing is actually meant for a home, a single well?
That is also supposed to be being addressed.
Okay. So when, like, when do you think?
I don't have a timeline that I can give you. I wish I did, but I don't. I'll try to find out from Chad when we can let those projects for about now. I don't have an answer for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I want to, I want to talk about water meters in Mystic. Uh, Ken and Wendy, I recommend, Ken, that'd be on the parent's meter. We bided a contract, uh, with a water meter in Mystic, a couple of months ago. And, you know, we were, I, I actually was a little bitter about it. And, uh, you ever heard of this, nobody, I, I'm, I'm a business owner. Next thing I knew, Chris, William Nichols, he was a board member, his son, he said, hey, they're setting the paper, they relent that contract. I said, no, I said, I ain't heard that from the chairman, Scott Sardner, but I saw it, picked the paper up, and I looked, I said, yeah, they relent it. Called Scott. I said, Scott, what's the deal? Why, we was a little bitter on it, why did we let this contract? Scott said, Eric, what'd you tell me, uh, the fund didn't want to there, so they're going to change the contract?
Whenever Chad put that project together, because Chad's the one that put everything together and submitted it to the, uh, well, just to the federal government to try to get funding.
Said they're going to change things, well?
So he, whatever he applied for, he had estimates in there for each individual thing that was going to be done. He said whenever we got those bids, at that time, if I remember right, I'm just going off of memories, so I don't know for certain, but your bid was somewhere in a hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. He told me that was it.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
The first bid put it on?
No, it was, uh, it was probably, uh, I should be running a hundred. But what?
That's not true. I know that for a fact.
I wouldn't have heard.
There's no way it was that one. One way or the other, that bid, all the bids that we got that day were well above what he had estimated to do the project for. For, for that portion of the project. And he said, Scott, if we do this, we will not have enough money to finish the project. I think if we relent the project, I can create some, some competition with meters by naming more than one style meter, and also maybe we can get some additional bidders. I don't know, we'll just have to see. But if we go with this bid, we're going to be too high, and we're not going to be able to finish the project without making a taxpayer.
He said, well, he said, well?
You asked me a question, I'm, I'm answering it. So, we chose to relent the project. At that point, the low bid, you were the second lowest bid. The low bid was almost twenty-five thousand dollars, hundreds.
That's right.
And that's what we chose to go with, so that we can afford to finish the project.
I, we did. The contract said they was going to change the bidding. Uh, the bid was not changed. What they did was, they said, well, we, let the county buy these meters. And let me tell you what you're getting into with these meters. You buy a hundred meters, computer operated. Go to City Go South, see what kind of problem, uh, problem they have right now with reading these meters. Uh, the simplest thing to do, you went with a two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollar meter. Uh, you could buy a seventy-five dollar master meter that somebody's got to go read. Uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollar meter, which you read the computer, plus an extra, what, what, twenty-two thousand dollars for the computer system? Twenty-four thousand, maybe. Then you got to send it off to let somebody bring the bill there. And so the City Go Subs have the same problem right now with this meter. That's why I wanted to come up and explain to you. They got these master meters, and they're not, I mean, they made, they designed for like forty, fifty, sixty thousand meter cities. Like you ride by, you ride by and pick up shirt, automatically reads it too. These little, them meters not made for a hundred meter system like in Mystic, Georgia. You need to get somebody to go to the meter, and they pull the meter up and they read it. You got to sit, pad, send it on right there. Uh, you pay, how much you gonna pay a month? How much of the county gonna pay a month? And services to build these hundred, people like in Mystic, Georgia. The meter's gonna be right, the reading's gonna be right? I'm telling you, not gonna be right. It's gonna be just like the City Go Sub. You're gonna be looking three or four months back, everything's gonna be complicated, you ain't gonna do it, you're gonna be fighting it. The simplest thing to do is relent the contract, go seventy-five dollar master meter, no computers. Or if you had forty thousand, that's fine. You got a hundred meters. One hundred meters, you read it. You hire somebody, go out there, read the meters for a hundred meters. A whole lot cheaper than what you're gonna pay somebody every month to send the bill. They pay you three hundred dollars for, for a computerized map? I mean, it's just, uh, it's just something that you don't do. You get it. Somebody said a snickerlord, there's nothing that, that, or a hundred meters does not work. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go and put it on record right now, because you're gonna have trouble with it. And, and one other thing, you know, I mean, when you let contracts, and you, uh, administer contracts, and if you're going to change the contract, call the county that's low bidder. And, and notify them that you are changing this contract, and you're gonna relent the contract. Don't let it come out and go self-starting. We picked go self-starting, and we seen it's been relented. I mean, that's just not, I mean, I, I'm not, I said, I got plenty to work. I'm just telling you what's gonna happen and when it's gonna happen. That way you'll never even, you, you've been misled on, on something that, I've been doing this forty years. Chad's been doing it fifteen years. He's a little architect who tried to get the most money up. Higher the contract is, the bigger percentage he gets. I mean, that's common shit, um, architects do. So I'm telling you right now, what you're doing is not gonna work. You, you know, agree through it, they're fine. It's not nothing to do with, uh, the, the water contamination, because it, it ain't just the contamination on the, on the meter, they all, uh, I mean, that's just my fault.
Anyone else?
I'll go ahead. It's not a water issue.
Um, my name is Candice Bennett. I do not live here in this county. Uh, I'm hoping you're gonna allow me to speak. Um, I live on the Tipp County line. I'm here to speak to you about the dogs and the evergiving unwanted animal population in your area. I live in Tipp County, but my work is all done here in your county, in your community. Over the past two weeks, I alone have removed forty-two dollars from a hoarding situation. This weekend alone, I moved ten unwanted puppies out of here, shipped them to Kentucky. According to my tax records from last year, I still have over thirty-two thousand dollars, which is a drop in the bucket, but it was all for this county, this community. This is, this is not included, the dog food, the dog houses I handed out, the hay. Um, it does not, you know, cover, it's just covering what I had picked up, took home, took care of shots, vetted, let alone the community people that I had went to their door and said, hey, can I fix your dog? I may not live in this community to pay taxes, but this community is where I strive to make a difference. Y'all were allowed, a, a, um, a while back, the city and county was giving funds to build shelter. This was three years ago. Those funds were never reused, and they went back into the Georgia budget. Also, by state code, you guys are supposed to have a dedicated officer, whether you have an animal control or not, a dedicated animal officer, dedicated to dealing with these issues. You do not. I propose, not only do you not need to build, do you need to build a shelter for this community, but I also propose, due to the illegal dumping of animals out in the county, that you need to require all animals four months and older to be microchipped. This can easily, they'd easily be done through a few free microchip clinics that I'm willing to do. If they can't get it done through me, they can go to Dr. Hill, who have a local web. If the dogs are microchipped and the owner's information is attached to the, to the microchip, when they dump a dog, an officer there can serve a citation that will benefit the community. That will help cut down on illegal dumping and bring money into the community by those citations. Again, I'm not a taxpayer. I'm just one broke person tired of dealing with the dogs. I'm just one broke person tired of dealing with the dogs.
I've never met you before, but Cody and I had a discussion about you the other day. And he told me about you coming and picking up the dogs and he expressed concerns about the dog problem. He had talked to Coffee County about possibly taking the dogs since we do not have them in the field. What you just said about us turning money back in is the first time I've ever heard of that. I've been here for three years. I had no knowledge of that whatsoever. Um, did we have the money, the budget to build animal shelters? No, I don't think so.
There is, there is government funds right now sitting there for shelters.
If there is, I would love to sit down and talk to you about that. I'm speaking with Kennedy. One of the items that was on this agenda was to approve an animal control contract with Coffee County. We opted not to do that tonight because I'm fixing to sit down next week with the city and negotiate what's called service delivery strategy. During that negotiation, I wanna see if we can work together to do it to, instead of just the county or just the city, or us paying two separate fees. So that's the only reason we didn't vote ahead to not to to be on the contract with Coffee County because they're the only ones, obviously aside from you, that we finally will take down.
Did you talk to Chuck Jones about what he's gonna do with these animals?
I haven't talked to him at all.
I think you need to have that conversation.
Okay.
And I think you need to also check which license he plans to use. If he's gonna use his exterminating license, then that means every dog he picks up out of here will be automatically euthanized. There's some good dogs that have come out of this county, some really good dogs. And I think the people in this county and this community really want to save their dogs. They don't wanna see these dogs put down. I have a lot of people on my Facebook that message me, asking for help. They don't have nowhere to go. You know, and I, right now, I'm applying for a grant, eight thousand dollars, to try and spend here to to stay new york dogs. Because there's a lot of, and those can't, there's a lot of poverty in this community. And and those people cannot afford to fix their dogs. They want their pets. Do I believe they love their pets? Yes. But they can't afford to fix them. And a lot of them can't afford the dog food. Last year alone, I handed out over twenty-seven pallets of dog food to this community. And I know that because it all came from Chile. I kept a record, twenty-seven pallets in one year, which is really not a lot, but it is a lot, eh, it is a lot, especially when it's coming out of my pocket. But, you know, and and Dr. Hill's been really good to me about helping me get dogs around to Spain here. The last time I did the Spain new grant, we only got four thousand. But we done a ton of dogs in this community. And it happened to be COVID, so there wasn't a whole lot of dogs at Dr. Hill's. We were running on through like cattle. I want to check out.
I want to do it and I'd love to sit down with you and talk to you about the grants and anything that we could do to try to come something.
Well, let's do that. Let's save your community because I promise you, it's not only, it's a health code violation. I mean, a lot of these dogs running around like babies, that's a health code violation. The dogs running around rampant, what if a child got a bit? There again, that's your health code violation. You, you know, and then you've got the link between domestic violence and animal violence. I had a dog that come out of this county right here. He was sexually assaulted by a man here. I will not say their names, but I have that dog. And he, he only served a year and a half in jail for what he done. But the point is, is there's a link between domestic violence and animal violence. Clean up the community with the animals and you're gonna clean up the community with other issues.
If you don't mind, if the states are the end of the meeting, I'll need you to get your information.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. You want?
My name is Chip Owen. I'm commander of South Central Road Fastport. Um, just to catch y'all up on our yearly, um, activity. Last year, we worked a hundred and sixty-seven narcotics investigations in Durham County. Um, uh, excuse me, we worked eighty-four, um, cases, made eighty-eight arrests, cooked down a hundred and sixty-seven arrests once. Uh, seized approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of illegal narcotics. Um, approximately fifty guns that were possessed by drug dealers, drug users, and convicted felons. Um, just in the month of January this year, we, uh, worked eleven cases and made eight arrests. And, uh, one of those was a trafficking cocaine case. Um, I don't know where all the money's coming from, but there's more drugs in this little town than per capita. Um, much bigger town. So we're doing the best we can to keep it not back. If you see anything, we got an anonymous tip line, it's four six eight eight four four nine. Um, if you think you know something, get with me and I'll give you my works self. But, uh, we're locking up approximately eighty drug dealers and higher level drug users slash convicted felons a year, and it's going up every year. Um, tax season's fixing to hit and we will be nonstop. Just people out to take the tax money and buy large amounts of methamphetamine at dirt cheap prices and talk to the community in the community. Um, just to give you a, a scale of how bad it's gotten. There's such a surplus of methamphetamine in the state of Georgia right now that, uh, about twelve years ago, an ounce of methamphetamine was twelve hundred dollars, and now it's about a hundred bucks. Um, you can actually, if you buy it in kilos, which is two point two pounds, it's sixty-one dollars an ounce. Um, drug dealers can go to Atlanta, buy one kilo of heroin, get two kilos of methamphetamine on the house just to run up there again. And it's all floating back south. Um, nobody from up north is coming down here to buy drugs because there's so much of it. So everybody goes from here north and brings the drugs back down south and, uh, sells it to our kids. And I don't know how many families it's ruined. I'm sure pretty much anybody and everybody in here can save it in some shape, form, or fashion, I don't know if they can. Um, it's not just meth, um, it's fentanyl. And, um, you don't know what fentanyl is. So you can say, oh, my kid smokes a little weed. Well, I've got about eight pounds of weed sitting in my vault right now that's got at least a trace of fentanyl in it. Um, so the secret with fentanyl is you don't know how much you can handle until you don't wake up. And, uh, we're not, we're not equipped with enough Narcan to to save that many people. If that, those eight pounds of weed with fentanyl were to get on the streets, there's not enough Narcan in our stock or the health department or O'Sula Hospital or dormitory combined to, uh, to save that many people. So just food for thought. We appreciate the support from the county. Um, y'all have any tips or information, just reach out to us and we'll be glad to work on it.
Appreciate it, Karen. Thank you. Thank y'all for all the truth.
Thank you.
You want? No one else, so we'll move on to the chairman's report. Um, what I would like to report tonight, I'm especially delighted to ask them how they felt about it. Because I have concerns since the committee didn't sit down and talk with me and maybe they're here about it. We sit here and vote on things before we give you an opportunity to talk about it. So something that we've done in the past, we would have meetings, a lot of times we would have the morning of the meeting, we would have a workshop meeting that the public is welcome to. Um, and that gave us a chance to discuss things in, in an open forum, not a, not a, how do you say it, forum. It gives us a chance to to find out, I I, where that came from. I came and watched one of these, or a few of these meetings before I took office. And I watched the guys sitting at these tables vote on things that it was obvious they didn't know a lot about what they were voting on. And I didn't wanna see that ever happen again. So when you say that I call on all ahead of time, I absolutely do. I call every member and talk to them ahead of time to make sure that they understand what it is they're voting on. Make sure that they have an opportunity to ask questions and make sure they go ahead of time so that they can do their own research and I just take my opinion. So what we would like to do going forward, instead of having public comment at the end of the meeting, we will begin the meeting or we will begin a workshop at five thirty. The workshop will be a chance for us to to discuss the issues in the county and also a chance for public to make their comments, say whatever they want to about what is on the agenda. Then we will at six o'clock when we go into the meeting, vote on any items that's on the agenda and the agenda. So I wanted to give everyone here notice, we'll also advertise it, um, on all of agenda. But we will begin to have a workshop at five thirty and the meeting will start at six. So other than that, I don't have anything to report. Mr. Mommy, you have anything?
No.
Mr. Ball? Johnson? Mr. Hickey? All right. With that said, um, I do have a need for executive session to discuss a legal matter. So that being said, I hear a motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter the executive session is, uh, the legal.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second to discuss it. You now, all of you, please say aye.
Aye.
And if those ayes sign, we are in the executive session. Y'all are welcome to sit around as soon as you come out of the session, session, little girl.
I will resume when they come back out of executive session.